Everyone, I would like to call the county council meeting of Monday, December 12th to order. Will the clerk please call the law?
Councilmember Cunningham.
Present in person.
Councilmember Flueheling.
Present.
Councilmember Dawson. Councilmember McEllen.
Present.
Councilmember Lawson, running late. Councilmember Howard.
Present.
Councilmember Rodman.
Present.
Councilmember Hervishan.
Present.
Councilmember Glover. Vice Chair Somerville.
Present.
Chairman Passamit.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. If you will please remain standing. Mr. McEllen, would you do the invocation, please?
Well, dear wise and loving God, thank you for your many abundant blessings. We thank you for life itself and for the measure of health given us to fulfill our duties. We thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing serious responsibilities. I ask that we as a body promote peace, order, and justice. And you graciously grant this assembled body wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, to have a sense of the true needs of our citizens, to have a keen thirst for justice, to understand and to clearly see what is good, fitting, and appropriate, to have the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, and to have personal peace in our lives and joy in our tasks. Finally, please help us to ensure our deliberations here tonight benefit those who live and work in our extended community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Would a member of council please offer a motion and a second for approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Flueheling made the motion. Mr. Rodman made the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion?
I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Number 10, I'll read it. Public hearing and approval of resolution to swap identified properties between Beaufort County and Rural and Critical Lands Program to build additional library, additional parks, and recreation fields, and a solid waste material recovery facility in southern Beaufort County. The Rural and Critical Lands Program Board met on Thursday, and they are planning a field trip this coming week, the 19th through the 20th or 21st. And I would like to request that we delay this item until they make their recommendations.
Okay, so when we get to that item, I will call on you to amend that particular item. We don't need to do it now, amending the agenda.
You don't need to, unless you want to remove it from the agenda. Otherwise, you can just wait till it comes up and move to postpone it to.
Okay.
Okay. What's your preference, Alice?
It doesn't matter.
Okay, then we will take it up. There, we'll determine exactly when we're going to take it up again. Mr. Rodman?
I was just going to say, would we still go with public hearing or would we postpone that also?
I would imagine we would postpone the public hearing as well. Okay. Any others? Seeing none, the agenda will be approved as stated, and I see, yep.
I just have a question.
Yes, sir.
Since we have some folks here who undoubtedly want to speak to number 10, can they do that at season comments?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, yes. Again, the agenda will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Next will be the approval of minutes of November the 14th. Motion and second, please.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Flueheling makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Glover makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, the minutes will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. We're at our administrator's report. Mr. Greenwood, I'm looking over there, but you were sitting there waiting patiently.
Good evening, members of council, chairman, and citizens of the county who are joining us tonight and watching this online either through the county channel or by YouTube. I wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and a very happy and safe New Year. This will be our last opportunity to say that before that time is upon us. I have three things real quickly tonight before you all. The first thing is that we're pleased to announce that last week the South Carolina Department of Veterans Affairs awarded $3.3 million dollars to Beaufort County for the construction of the 3.6 miles, 10-foot pathway between the Marine Corps Air Station and the U.S. Marine Corps Laurel Bay Military Housing Area.
This is one of the. Let me just interrupt for one second. Gerald Dawson is trying to get in. He's in. Got you. Thank you.
I'm in. I'm in.
This project is one of the 24 pathways from our 2018 sales tax program, and the grant covers 100% of the cost of the project. The improvements to this pathway along SC 116 will provide a safe passage for bicyclist runners and pedestrians between Laurel Bay and the air station. That's a big win. I congratulate our engineering and structure folks, ACA Jared Fralix, for the hard work that he put in to get that application in and get the award. Also pleased to announce this year that we have a draft CAFER in our possession.
Wow.
That will be submitted hopefully by December 31st, which is the deadline. This will be the first time since fiscal year 2012 that we have complied with that state mandated deadline. So appreciate the finance department for their hard work, getting up on top, getting on that. I appreciate Deputy County Administrator's work, Ms. Rixland, for her diligence in making sure that that guy completed in a timely manner. And also want to thank Councilmember Hervishan and Councilmember Lawson for standing with the finance department and with me to provide the resources necessary to build the finance department so that we could accomplish that task. Job well done. Your leadership in that area has proved beneficial, and I just want you to know that. And I'm grateful to you for your leadership in that area.
Thank you so much.
And this next part is going to be a little motion from me, and it'll be my last time to do this. I know we're going to do it formally at some point in the agenda, but I want to say thank you to the outlying council members. Mr. Flueheling, Mr. Hervishan, Mr. Rodman, Mr. Somerville. You all, your support of me is something that I'm grateful for. I'm very appreciative of your support. You guys have offered me accountability, both in my role as a planning director and in my role now as county administrator, not with the purpose of chastising me, but with the purpose of making me a better person and employee here at the county. And I appreciate that as well. So, Councilmember Somerville, you've had the opportunity to hire me in two roles here at the county. First in 2018 when I came here to be the planning director, and then promoted me to the county administrator. Each time, you've made my life better, and I appreciate that. And I'll miss all of you. And I want to thank you all again for your service to the county, and I hate to see you leave. I can be far you all after you're out of office. Please feel free to reach out to me. I will always treat you all as members of the Beaufort County Council. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you. We're at citizen comments. I'm sure we have some people who wish to make comments. I see Mr. Barnwell chomping at the bit. Please come forward, Mr. Barnwell. We always love to hear from you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, as well as all members of the council, to staff, as well as the general public. My name is, for the record, Thomas Curtis Barnwell, Jr. I'm a very short-term person here in the county, very small taxpayer. I've only been in the county for 87 years, so I'm here.
And county.
Sir?
And county.
And county. Hopefully 119. To be very, very specific, I would like very much to express my sincere thanks to all council persons, but especially to all of those that are retiring. I want you to know that I really appreciate your services to all the residents of Beaufort County for all of the years that you've served. And some of you I have been bothering for many, many years, even when I was executive director of the Beaufort Despereaux Comprehensive Health Services. Some of you have been around and been a service for years after our back. And I want to personally express my sincere thanks to all of you and wish all of you healthy, safe, happy retirement, and a very pleasant, happy holiday season. I can't sit down without Mr. Chairman reminding the council that we still need drainage on Hilton Head, Iowa. And I am concerned. My family is as well. US Highway 278 extension. We want the highway. We need the highway. The community, the county, the region need that highway. Let me be sure that you understand that. Based on what has happened in Florida, the cause we're washing out, my concept is that it certainly would be an opportunity if that highway started from the groundwater at Moss Creek, stay above ground level until it. Spanish well road. Thank you for the opportunity of speaking tonight, and may God bless all of you, especially those who are retiring. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to interrupt one more time. Just want to acknowledge that Mr. Barnwell is Mr. February in the South Carolina African-American calendar this year, so.
Excellent.
Grant McClure.
Good evening, Grant.
Good evening. It's a tough act to follow. My name's Grant McClure. I'm the South Coast Project Manager with the Coastal Conservation League. Item 10 on the agenda this evening involves a potential land swap of 60 acres from the Rural and Critical Lands Program to construct a new library, new parks, wet fields, and a waste recovery facility. We do not question the need for these facilities, but we believe any transfer of rural critical property must be scrutinized to uphold the integrity of the program and the original intent of the property's inclusion in the program. The loss of 60 acres of protected land in exchange for just 18 acres is concerning. In addition, there needs to be an analysis of the resource values lost and gained in this exchange. We understand the evergreen and new leaf tracts were included in the Rural and Critical Program for stormwater management and to protect the headwaters of the Okati River. There needs to be an assessment of how and whether it is possible for the remaining land on the new leaf tract to fulfill these purposes, especially when factoring in conversion of the adjoining 60 acres to impervious development. There also needs to be an assessment of the natural resource values associated with the Camp St. Mary's and Bluffton Parkway parcels to ensure that they will meaningfully contribute to the Rural and Critical Program. This information is critical for council to make a meaningful and informed decision on the Rural and Critical Swap, and we understand that the Rural and Critical Board took up this issue at their December meeting and decided further analysis was needed to determine if it is indeed a fair swap. And we urge the council to postpone this issue until the above analysis can be conducted and they can give a recommendation to them. Thank you.
Yep. Who's next? That's it. Okay, thank you very much. Lays out committee reports. Any member which to speak? Mr. Rodman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have one item coming out of public facilities. It's item number five on the consent agenda, and it is basically contract approval for Talbot and Bright to do two things. One is the funds for the construction contract administration, and the second is the repackaging of it since we've decided that we're going to rebid it. And I'm in favor of what is proposed. Just a couple of comments on it to put it in perspective. You know, when we like the runway, there were two primary benefits. I think one was that it had a significant impact on general aviation, and that rolls into hospitality and also into property values. And the second was it preserved the commercial service, which was literally ending as the runway came online. I think my sense of where Hilton Head is at this point of the council and the citizens, there's a concern about too much growth and too many visitors, so there's not a large appetite for them to put a significant amount of money into the currently proposed terminal. So it's logical to downsize it. Now, when we do that, I think there will be a couple of things that will be covered. Clearly, even at a reduced size, that will cover residential demand of people that live there. And it will also service the, if you will, the shoulder seasons in the spring and the fall, which are good hospitality times for the island to incorporate hospitality. So the only piece that would perhaps be slightly shorted would be the peak demand during the summer. If you look at what's happened over the last couple of years, it's been kind of a roller coaster on the traffic volume, up then down, and a lot of issues beyond our control. So in any event, I do think that this is appropriate. I think it's appropriate to downsize it. And I think the only question for staff to deal with is whether you, you know, just figure out what the size ought to be and do it once, or whether you take the current one and do it in two phases. I kind of favor personally just downsizing it to what we can afford for the most part. And I think the worst of all worlds would be if we ended up doing two phases, and the first one got completed and whoever came back and did the second. We have added a bridge to nowhere that a lot of towns have. So anyway, I think this is a good one, and I commend it to the council for approval.
Thank you. Any others?
And the Community Services and Public Safety Committee has recommended approval for the appointment of Marilyn Harris as the county's council representative on the Beaufort Housing Authority.
Okay. Any others? Seeing none, we will move on to item number nine, which is the approval of the consent agenda. I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, who was first? Mr. Somerville was first, and.
Mr. Hervishan would be.
Second. Motioned and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, the consent agenda will be approved without objection. Item number 10 is a public hearing and approval of a resolution to swap identified properties between Beaufort County and the Rural and Critical Land Programs to build an additional library, additional parks, and recreation fields, and a solid waste material recovery facility in southern Beaufort County. Ms. Howard?
Mike, can you make a motion to postpone or delay, which word is better?
Postpone. Postpone.
This decision, this public hearing and this motion until Rural and Critical Lands has a chance to go do their due diligence on a field trip, which will be next week, and they will need to meet again, which will be in January. So it might be the last county council meeting of January before we can bring this back up again.
Okay, and if I'm correct, the county council meeting in January will be the 9th and the 23rd?
So it would be the 23rd.
23rd. So your motion would be postpone action until the 23rd of January 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Hervishan, you will be the second. And is there any discussion on the.
um, program has the opportunity or the probable result of killing the program, our Rural and Critical Lands Program. So I, I really advise the next council to be very circumspect and very thoughtful in their approach to this matter.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Two, or quick. Can you still hold the public hearing today since we already advertised it before we delay?
This actually wasn't published for a public hearing today, or was it? It was? Okay. You can have your public hearing if you want to, then, sure.
I think I feel obligated to do that, Mr. Chairman, if there's anybody who wants to talk on the matter.
Having it, having it this evening will keep us from having to do it again in January.
There's nothing wrong with doing it again in January.
Well, except for, except for the cost of the advertising.
Okay. Is there any member of the com, public at this time who wishes to make their feelings known about item number ten, which is to be postponed until action is taken by Rural and Critical Lands in January? Seeing none, we will close the public. There's no one on? Okay.
I do have a second question. Um, somebody refresh my memory. We postponed this once before because Rural and Critical Lands didn't get it in time, but then they said that they had some type of other field trip previously.
Right. This is, they met last week, Thursday, regular meeting, and after a very long discussion of, and presentations, this was what was suggested and voted on at the Rural and Critical Lands Board meeting to do a field trip to see all the sites, including Camp St. Mary.
But wasn't it, that, you missed it in the last meeting, is there one another field trip?
That was a different field trip, a different site.
I'm gonna oppose the delay. I think we've already delayed it once. I think this council, council has been educated on it. That's just my personal opinion, so I will vote against the postponement.
Okay. Any other comments before we take action? This is on the amendment we're voting on to postpone action until September, January twenty, January twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-three. Because we're going to have some no votes, will the clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Hervishan?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Flueheling?
No.
Councilmember Dawson?
No.
Councilmember McEllen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Rodman?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Vice Chair Somerville?
Uh, yes.
Chairman Passment?
Yes. It passes eight, three, no. Okay. The item is now postponed for action until January twenty-third. Item number eleven is a public hearing and approval of a resolution...
We move forward, um, just for my...
Uh, don't press that because you're putting yourself on mute.
Okay. Don't press it. I wasn't too sure what to do.
It's on.
It's on.
It's on.
Thank you. Um, in order for this swap to take effect, uh, it actually needs eight votes to make that happen?
That's correct.
Okay. I'll make sure. Thank you.
Okay. Getting back to item number eleven is a public hearing and approval of a resolution to approve a commercial property lease agreement between Beaufort County, thirty-six-hundred Road, Hilton Head Island, and the Davis Budget Group. May I have a motion so we can have a public hearing? So moved, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rodman makes the motion.
Second.
Mr., um...
McEllen.
McEllen.
He's here somewhere.
Yeah, I know he's here somewhere. Um, okay, we will turn to the public. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment about this particular item? Seeing none, we will close the public portion. Is there anyone on council wishes to discuss this item? Seeing none, this will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Item number twelve is a third reading of an ordinance for a text amendment in Community Development Code, section five dot three dot twenty, Architectural Standards and Guidelines Applicability, and Appendix eight dot one dot twenty, Community Preservation District's Relationship to the Community Development Code to restrict that a shipping container or other similar portable storage containers is not considered a dwelling. May I have such a motion? So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Dawson makes the motion. Ms. Howard makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion on this particular item? Mr. Lawson?
Um, yes. Um, so storage containers, we're doing it because it is a, a life safety issue that someone puts a storage container in someone's back backyard that would not create a fire hazard so it could be killed. It does meet all the hurricane codes. Now, um, I just want to make sure one knows that, and, um, Mr. Chuck, if you can kind of help here, I know that I kind of stepped up to this question, but if someone still wanted to come back and they wanted to build with storage containers, um, and they wanted to come before the zoning board and ask for an appeal, is that something that gets someone out, hire an architect, and decide they wanted to do these type kind of things, and they still come to, 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 to us for a zoning appeal to build a home out of storage containers?
So this amendment is part of the zoning ordinance. Anything in the zoning ordinance can be appealed for variance to the zoning board, and it would be entirely up to the zoning board what information they would want to review it, and it would be up to them to make a determination.
So if someone did want to build with storage containers, they still could do that, but they'd have to go through the proper, proper channels of asking for a, a, a variance to be able to do that?
If they got the variance through the process.
Okay.
But just going through the variance doesn't mean that you're gonna get the variance, but that process would be available to them, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's fine.
While you're there, um, again, emphasizing agriculture is not being impacted by this.
Right.
Because there are no dwellings associated with the agriculture.
Right.
Any other comments? Um, this will be approved on third reading without objection. Are there any objections?
Nope. I object.
Okay.
I was just gonna save this deal for you because I said it before.
Okay. Would you, uh, call the roll, please?
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember Howard?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Flueheling?
No.
Councilmember McEllen?
Yes.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, yes.
Councilmember Rodman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hervishan?
No.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Vice Chair Somerville?
Yes.
Chairman Passment?
Yes.
The motion passes eight, three.
Yes. Item number thirteen is a third reading of an ordinance to provide maintenance work on private roads. I have a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Flueheling makes the motion.
Second.
Mr. Glover makes the second. Duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion?
I'd like to make some comments.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. McEllen.
This, um, is a third reading. The first two readings proved to be positive, and as a result of information that was developed thereafter, this was referred back to the committee for a recommendation to be brought forward to the council tonight for, uh, review, consideration, and a final vote. The Community Services Committee convened a meeting of people who researched this situation, and it was discovered clearly that there is a constitutional restriction in the state of South Carolina that prevents us from using public funds to improve private property, if that improvement is for the exclusive use of those private property owners and not for the public good. With that prohibition in mind, the committee decided that this matter should come to council with the following information included. There are processes and procedures in place in Beaufort County for public funds to be spent on private roads to maintain them. However, to do so, the property owners have to agree to allow the county to do the work, and then the property owners have to agree to reimburse the county for the work that was done. So the county could, uh, obtain an estimate for the work to be done, inform the owners of the private road that the work was being done. The owners of the road would have to allow the county to undertake the repair, and then they would have to agree to, to pay for it. Um, we've discovered that there are over a thousand private roads in the county, two-hundred-and-eighty-seven miles of roads, and that the least expensive repair would probably be about ten thousand dollars a mile. A moderate repair would be about twenty-five thousand dollars a mile, and an extensive repair would be about thirty-five thousand dollars a mile. So the people who own the property would have to agree to pay that back to the county if the repair was undertaken. They could pay all at once, or they could agree to create a special tax district, and they could have the repairs placed on their property taxes over a period of, say, three to five years. If they would not agree to do that, no public funds could be expended. There's also another process in the county that would allow the owners of a private road to give the road to the county, and then the county would be the owner and be responsible for maintaining it in the future. That process is clearly identified and can be made available to people who wish to donate the road to the county. There are people who own private roads in the county who conduct their own maintenance on the roads and pay the bill for that maintenance. The maintenance in this situation would be to allow emergency vehicles access on roads that are unpassable, sometimes after a storm, or, um, fire trucks that could not get down the road because of the growth of trees over the road that knocks the top of the fire engine off as they try to pass. So the work would consist of maintaining a private road, usually a dirt road, and then also doing some work on the trees to remove the branches that were hanging over the road that would make it impossible to pass. So the Community Services Committee decided not to take a position on the matter, but to send it for review and consideration of this full deliberative body tonight so they can make a decision. Uh, with a motion and a second and a vote to, um, allow this ordinance to be created, we would essentially be authorizing an illegal ordinance that is against the Constitution of the state. When we issue that ordinance, we then probably have to undertake a, um, effort to have that ordinance repealed, and to do that, we have to go to a court of competent jurisdiction and have the ordinance ruled invalid because it was in, uh, against the language of the Constitution. So on two occasions, we would probably look foolish. We would look foolish to pass an illegal ordinance, and then we would look foolish suing ourselves to have the ordinance repealed that we passed. So we're making all of that information available to the county, to the council tonight, so they're making a fully informed decision as to how they would like to proceed. So a yes vote for this is the passing of an illegal ordinance, a no vote is the final vote, and it will go away. Let me finish by saying that we have, we are going to encourage the Community Services Committee to continue to study this matter. We are trying to decide if it would be a benefit to buying four-wheel-drive ambulances in the county, making them available for the thousand private roads, some of which may be impassable after storms, so the ambulance that would be going in to perform a life-saving maneuver would not be allowed to get, wouldn't be able to go down the road. The problem with that is, how many ambulances do we need? What would the cost be, and where would we put them to ensure there'd be a prompt response? Um, the second thing that we would like to do is have that committee consider the long-range implications of this to see if there was a way, within the language of the Constitution, to provide service for the maintenance of these roads as a part of the public good. The problem with that is that the, uh, the maintenance and improvements to the roads can't be done if it's for the exclusive use of those private property owners, and I'll give you an example. Uh, we do perform maintenance on boat ramps that are privately owned, but that's for the public good because more people than the owner of the boat ramp uses the boat ramp, if the logic there, if you follow that logic. So, uh, um, my father once told me to stop talking when I was finished, so I think I'll stop now. I think I've made enough points for everyone to consider on what action I would like to take going forward.
Is there anyone else wishes a point or a...
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Flueheling?
Mr. McEllen's, um, offer of a, of a solution that meets not only the legal requirements of the state, but, uh, the general inclination of the county to respect private property ownership is well received, sir, and I thank you for offering us a way out. And I think what, what it entails really is that we delay final vote on this and have this matter returned after appropriate consideration of the Public Safety Committee, um, and return with an amended ordinance that spells out exactly what our options are, what the options to the public are. And so I'm wondering if perhaps you would offer a, a motion to postpone and return for second reading after reconsideration by the Community Services Committee.
Well, this is third reading tonight, Mr. Flueheling.
Right. And you can make a motion to return it to your committee.
I wasn't the motion maker. I was just commenting in the discussion phase.
If Mr. Flueheling makes that motion, I'll second it.
I'll go ahead and make a motion, sir, that we return this matter to the, uh, the, the Community Services or Executive Committee for reconsideration and amendment of their proposed ordinance to be more in compliance with state law.
I'll second.
Okay.
Comments on that, then, Mr. Chairman?
Well, let's make sure we have the correct language. Um, we're postponing an action, so we have to have a specific date as to when we're postponing in this...
Referral to the committee, sir. That's not really required.
All right. So we want to refer this back to the Community Services Committee.
That's correct, sir.
Understanding, sir, that it will be returning to us at second reading at that time.
Okay. Um, Mr. Flueheling made the motion, and Mr. Glover made the second. Is there any discussion regarding this?
Yeah, I'd like to just clarify whether it's a second or third reading, because this is the third reading tonight.
I assume there'll be major changes, sir.
We can deal with that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll probably have to bring it back for second reading, uh, to Councilmember Flueheling's point, um, and redo the public hearing and all of that, because it'll be a significant, it'll be a significant rewrite of, of what we've currently presented to you all. I would like to make one other statement for the council, just for their knowledge that it's very likely that the committee structure may change in the new year, uh, so even though it's been referred to the Community Services Committee tonight, uh, there is a possibility that that may not be what that committee is called, uh, in January.
Understood, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Cunningham?
Yeah. When this originally got pushed back to the committees, I was on that motion because I was afraid that it was illegal, and with the hopes of finding out a way to get this passed the right way legally here in our county and the state of South Carolina. Um, that got pushed back to the committee, we got the information, and it came back and found out it is illegal. And not only that, we got a dollar amount, which a lot of us requested, and it's gonna be somewhere between five to ten million dollars based on the numbers we were given. Um, with that said, if we're gonna have that much of a major structure, doesn't it just make more sense to shoot this down now and restart from the ground up and see which route to go? Because we have a lot of different types of property. We have heirs' property, we have communities that share one road. There's a lot of different other avenues we could take, and it might not be a one shoe fits all. It might be two or three different ordinances for different types of properties, and I don't see how that gets done in this ordinance. Um, and I know the amount of time and effort that's been put into this project, and I think there's a lot... to be somewhere between $5 to $10 million based on the numbers we were given. With that said, if we're going to have that much of a major structure, doesn't it just make more sense to shoot this down now and restart from the ground up and see which route to go? Because we have a lot of different types of property. We have heirs' property, we have communities that share one road, there's a lot of different other avenues we could take, and it might not be a one shoe fits all. It might be two or three different ordinances for different types of properties, and I don't see how that gets done in this ordinance. And I know the amount of time and effort that's been put into this project, and I think there's a lot of good pieces in it that we can use as building blocks, but I don't see how, when we're coming out with the findings that we use public dollars, that this is going to be illegal, other than the ordinances we already have put in place, how we can make enough structure where this even comes back to the council. So I'm going to vote against it. I think it should be turned down today, and I think it should be put back to the committee, and we should come up with a solution for the specific types of roads that we're talking about.
Okay, any other comments, Mr. Glover?
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the motion that Brian has offered, and I'm going to support that motion. I would also like to add to that that this ordinance did not deal with all private road in Beaufort County. He only dealt with roads that was necessary for emergency purposes only, so that if a fire department refused to go down a road because of the maintenance of that road, then the county would step in. If the ambulance services decided that that road was too, it was impassable, they would refuse to go down, then the county would step in to take care of citizens. Want to go a little step further. Home health also see patient down these roads on a regular base, and they are refusing to go down these roads because of that. So it's becoming more and more of a health issue for our citizens. Every citizen in Beaufort County do not need maintenance, and the county would not be doing maintenance on all roads that are private. There are some roads that the owner requested for the county to take over, but everybody down that road has to assign that right away, and they're refusing to do that. So it makes it very difficult, but yet the services have to be provided for the citizen. It's really, I know it would be perceived as being against the law, but sometimes you have to have the courage to stand up against a law that's not working for you, and I don't have a problem doing just that. Now, I also would go a little further by saying that we do have an asset for whatever it's worth, and that a former council member whose signature is on some of these ordinance, Weston Newton, is now the chairman of the Judiciary Committee, and he may be able to help us navigate this. I don't know, but if we allow that to happen and to seek out further resources, we may come back with something that we can give to our citizens that are in need of this maintenance at this time.
Mr. Chairman?
This has been this body numerous times, and it has been sent back to Community Services. And I was part of that discussion with Community Services. I don't remember who all was present in that discussions, but I think Community Services has done just about all they can do with this ordinance as it's currently configured. I'm going to vote against postponing it because I don't think that this ordinance, as it's currently configured, can be faced. I think it's going to have to, I think it's going to have to start it from scratch, and I think, I certainly wouldn't want to do anything that would deprive the new council of an opportunity to take a cut at this, but I think you're going to have to take a cut at it from a different perspective. I think we got off on a road to nowhere here, so I'm going to vote no on the motion to postpone.
Mr. Dawson?
I hear all that has been said, and I concur with the fact that maybe postponing is the way to go temporarily, but I would say to council as a whole that we have a situation on hand where we put the administrator and the staff in a terrible situation when an emergency does arise and we can't provide the services that are needed on these private roads. I'll give you a prime example. About two years ago, we had, it wasn't a hurricane, it was just a windstorm, and there was a private road, rambling roads, where a tree fell across the road to where the, all the homes that were on the road couldn't get out of the road to get to access the main highway to actually go to work, go to shop, go to do anything. They couldn't get out. And so I emailed the county administrator and Public Works Director Neil Desai and asked both of them to take a look at this situation and give these folks on their roads some relief. Neil Desai responded and said that it's private-owned property, and the county can't do anything, can't perform any work on private roads. And so after two days of those people not being able to get out of their roads, they called Channel 11 Newsbook, WTOC, and they broadcasted on live television. It was after that broadcast that the county administrator took an effort to inform our Public Works Department to actually go and remove that tree so that those folks could get out of that road. Now, I said all of that just to say, it shouldn't have ever had to come to that point. We have to do something. We got to put something in place to deal with this situation because if we don't, the county administrator and council, we're going to be sued at some point because of these private roads, because of an emergency situation where we don't get, and then the assistance that is needed. So I say that whether we vote us down, whether we postpone it, whatever we do, we need to probably ask our legal staff, the county administrator and our legal staff, to confer with our state legislators to see what assistance they can give us with this, but we have to have some measure in place to where we can deal with this situation. Other than that, our emergency services folks, they're not going to be able to access these roads, these private roads, under extreme conditions. Four-wheel drives, a four-wheel drive won't do us any good if you can't get across a tree that's blocking the road. I'm stopping there. I'm stopping there.
Mr. Rodman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a problem that I hope gets resolved in due course, but I do think it lends itself to stepping back, taking a deep breath, figure out what the way is to make it happen, because we are dealing with violation of the state constitution. So I agree with Paul. I think we're, I think we're better served to not try to fix this, but to step back, take a fresh approach, clean face diaper, and figure out if there's a better way to do it. There's certainly a lot of legal discussions that's needed. So I oppose it.
Yeah. Is there someone else? Is there any other one who has not spoken yet who would like to speak? Yes.
I voted for this the first two times, but after all the evidence, everything was shown to us at the Community Services Committee, I don't think this ordinance is fixable. So I will be voting against it, but I don't want us to quit working on it.
Okay. Would you call the rule?
May I?
Yes.
Wrap it up?
Wrap it up.
I want to acknowledge what Mr. Dawson said, and say that I can acknowledge what happened in the past, but I'm certainly not bound by it, and I think that was a terrible mistake. I think that it was an injustice not to go down there and meet that tree. However, this, postponing this for five or six months doesn't do us any good. I think this should be disposed of, and a whole new effort should be undertaken to find a way, to see if there is a way for us to improve private property for the public good in line with the language of the state constitution. I don't think it's necessary to keep this on the books for five or six months. I think we should just close it out, develop that committee, let it do its work, and when they're finished, come back to you without a date certain, and we should consider whatever ordinance it is that they bring in. This doesn't have to be adjusted, it needs a whole new look and a whole new ordinance, but I think keeping this open is really unnecessary.
Okay. Could you please call the rule? This is on the referral to the Community Services Committee.
Kind of postponing it.
Yeah.
Councilmember Flouellin?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Dawson?
Yes.
Councilmember McGowan? Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, no.
Councilmember Howard?
No.
Councilmember Rodman?
No.
Councilmember Hervishan?
No.
Vice Chair Somerville?
No.
Chairman Passment?
No.
The motion fails.
We're back to the original third reading of the ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Rodman?
I'd like to expand briefly, Mr. Chairman, on Larry's comments, because I think the alternative way of funding this is what's called a special district. And assuming that a group of people cannot unanimously agree to do something, state law provides for this in the special tax district. And essentially, the way it works is a group of people draw a boundary around whatever it is, in this case would be the road, and they have two mechanisms to go forward. If 75% of them, based on a property value basis, agree, they can do it by petition through the county. If 15% of them want to have an election, they can petition the county to conduct that election, and then when the election is conducted, if there's a majority, then all of them go along. So for example, if 60% of the people agreed and 40% didn't, it would all end up paying, it would go through the tax rules, and it can be done in a way that it can be spread over multiple years. So there is a good way to do it. There's hundreds of these around the state, and I think the state constitution and the state statutes provide it.
Any final comments? Mr. Glover?
I appreciate Mr. Rob, Mr. Rodman making those comments. It just triggered me to say this, that we have on our books PS 15 and PS 17 that the chairman of the community service so eloquently gave us to read, and I do not believe that there are anybody in this county, and if there are, I think it's less than what I have on my, things I have on one hand, action to create those special tax districts. It's a law that, and the ordinance here at the state level and the county level, that are really for those who have means, and those that do not have means are left out. If I had the resources, I can do exactly what's in PS 15 and PS 17 for my, for my community, for my neighborhood, for my road. Most of the citizens in my district cannot afford to do that, nor would they ever know who actually will be responsible other than the taxpayer at this time because of heirs' property and some other means. So I say that to say that we need to try to provide services to the least among us, and that's the only thing I'm advocating. I don't need it for myself, but it's the least among us. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, would you please call the rule? We're voting on the third reading of the ordinance. But yes means that you want to go forward with an ordinance that has been deemed illegal.
Councilmember Flouellin?
Yes.
Councilmember Glover?
Yes.
Councilmember Cunningham?
No.
Councilmember Dawson?
No.
Councilmember McGowan?
No.
Councilmember Lawson?
Mark Lawson, no.
Councilmember Howard?
No.
Councilmember Rodman?
No.
Councilmember Hervishan?
No.
Vice Chair Somerville?
No.
Chairman Passment?
No.
Motion fails.
Item number 14, is it approval of a resolution declaring the results of the referendum to impose a 1% sales tax and use tax subject to the referendum called for by ordinance Motion, please?
I'll move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cunningham made the motion.
No, second.
Ms. Howard made the second, duly motioned and seconded. Any discussion by members of council?
Just like to say I'm excited about this. I know it was a tough one, we weren't sure if it was going to get passed or not, the referendum itself. We have a big task on our hands in two years to show that we can do it the right way, and I hope we get that done, and we all work together to get this accomplished, because the people are trust enough to get it done in a timely manner.
Thank you. Any other comments? This will be approved without objection, and I see no objections. Our final item is a special recognition of outgoing county council members. Leaving our county council, this is the last meeting of the year and also the last meeting for four of our members. They are Mr. Hervishan, Mr. Flouellin, Mr. Somerville, and Mr. Rodman. We do have a plaque, and I would ask, as your name is called, to join the podium with our county administrator. Mr. Hervishan?
I understand your family is here, so they should come on. Come on. Come on. Nice.
Yes, sir. I was told that tonight is Mrs. Hervishan's birthday, and her husband dragged her down here, so I want to wish her happy birthday.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday.
Thank you. Are you that short, Brian? Joe, can I see that plaque for a second? Can you just hold it up? That's very nice. Each of the plaques shows county council, information about that particular council member, and a picture of that. Before we go back to our citizens, do any of the outgoing council members wish to make a statement? Mr. Hervishan? The floor is yours.
I had not prepared to say anything until right at this very moment, so I appreciate that.
Are you that short, Brian? Joe, can I see that plaque for a second? Can you just hold it up? That's very nice. Each of the plaques shows county council information about that particular council member and a picture of that. Before we go back to our citizens, do any of the outgoing council members wish to make a statement? Mr. Hervishan? The floor is yours.
I had not prepared to say anything until right at this very moment, so I appreciate that. Well, first and foremost, and you're a baby too, but happy birthday to my wife. Yeah, the baby too. That's the birthday present I could give her. But I just want to say it's been an honor and a privilege to serve the citizens of Beaufort County. It has been an interesting four years as we've gone through a lot of change and an interesting time, COVID times, and a lot of interesting deliberations that we've had, and I certainly appreciate the fellowship and the healthy debate that we've had over the last four years. It's been a pleasure to serve each and every one of you.
Thank you. You certainly have been a healthy addition, especially in the area of communities.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Flueeling?
Thank you, sir. When I ran for office in 2008, I asked the simple question of the voters, are you better off now than you were 10 years ago? I ran on a promise to do my best to preserve and improve the quality of life of everybody in Beaufort County, not only my constituents at that time, but the future residents of Beaufort County. There's a lot of good things that we've done, the Spanish Moss Trail, the rural and critical lands program purchases, and their association and partnership with the Open Land Trust, the community development code and the comprehensive plan, improved relationship and communication with municipalities, airport road and other infrastructure improvements. We've done a lot in 10 years, and I think, yes, we are better off now than we were 10 years ago. And I thank you, and I thank all of the county council for helping us get here, and the county staff, and the administrations, and the boards and commissions for helping get us here. I appreciate all of you and couldn't do my job without you. To the new council members and those remaining on council, remember you are here to serve the interests of your constituents. Even if you disagree, their voices need to be heard. To my supporters over the years, thank you. I'll still be available if I can help you in any way. Please remember that my contact information is public. To my constituents who've helped me over the years, who've supported me, thank you. Your votes for me and the trust you've placed in my hands has humbled me more than any other thing I've done in my life. I'm truly honored for your support and honored to be able to represent you. I hope you feel justified in that trust now that I've reached the conclusion of my career in public service. And finally, I'd like to thank my wife, my son, grandson, my family, and friends for their patience and their input and advice on a multitude of issues over the years. I leave office retaining your respect and admiration, I think, and a lot more friends than I had when I started this, and I do appreciate that. You've all helped me survive with my reputation, my dignity, and my principles intact. Thank you. And undefeated, by the way. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mr. Rodman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's been my high honor and distinct privilege to have served these 17 years, Beaufort County Council, and actually two before that, on the Board of Education. It's a lot of fun. I've enjoyed it. I enjoy working on what I view as difficult problems, and hopefully have made a small contribution over the years, and I will always look back on this as a point in my life that I truly enjoyed. So I thank all of you.
Thank you.
And Mr. Somerville?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was raised by my grandfather, who was born in 1882, and his father fought in the Civil War and was wounded at least three times. And so my grandfather's idea of doing a good job is a pretty high bar, and I don't ever remember him complimenting me on anything that I ever did or telling me that I did a good job. And one day, he gave me an assignment to do, and I thought I did particularly well, and I was very proud of what I'd done, and so I was doing what you should never do. I was fishing for a compliment. And I said, Granddaddy, you know I finished that job, and I did a really, really good job of that. And he looked at me and he said, well, boy, he said, you did more good than harm. So as I leave this august body, I hope that I've done more good than harm. You know, if you vote in enough matter, sooner or later, you vote against everybody. And people have a tendency to not remember the 99 times that you voted the way they thought you should. They remember that one time that you voted in a way that they thought that you shouldn't. So eventually, you don't have a constituency, and I guess that's what's happened to me. I voted against everybody eventually. But I do want to thank every member of this body, this council, and every member of council that served with me who's no longer here, and particularly the staff. The staff has to be the most tolerant group of people that I've ever met in my life, not to mention professional. I asked them the other day how many of them had defriended me and blocked me from their block collar, and nobody raised their hand, so I don't know whether they did or not. But I appreciate every one of you. Appreciate everyone up here. It's been an honor and a pleasure, and I'm only a phone call away, so thank you.
Thank you. There is one other person that we would like to acknowledge this evening, and I'm going to turn to my colleague, Mr. McKellen, to talk about that individual.
I don't have a plaque or anything. So Phil Foot, who's been with us for 122 years, has decided to cash in and, as I said the other night, move to Miami and start a private investigation agency. He's going to call it Miami ICE. Phil has been a United States Marine. After his service in the Marine Corps, he came right to Beaufort County, been here 36 years. He's moved through a variety of positions, achieved the rank of Colonel running the detention center, and then came over here as an assistant county administrator. I've known Phil for more than a decade. He is a real stalwart. He can be relied upon to talk to you at any time of the day or night, including weekends, which I've availed myself of. He and I are the only true Beatles fans in Beaufort County, I've discovered, and we've shared a number of stories and movie posters among and between us. Phil, we're all going to miss you. We congratulate you for the great work that you've done. I know you're going to be here for another two weeks, and people will continue to tell you that, but from the bottom of our collective hearts, we extend our sincere thanks to you on this, the last council meeting of 2022, and we wish you the very, very best wherever it is you end up and whatever it is you're going to do. But you can always have the condo in Miami.
Okay, we're at our final citizen comments. Is there any member of the audience who wishes to make a comment? Yes, ma'am. Please step forward.
Good evening. My name is Leanne Coulter, and I am an Oscar long-term girlfriend. And I came here tonight really to thank you all for your support of the issues that face us in Ireland, and especially to thank the members that are not going to be returning next year for all that you've done. It's a lot of work, and I just really sincerely appreciate every single one.
Thanks for coming on. Anyone else? Mr. Campbell?
Uh-oh, here it comes. Mr. Chairman, members of council, I'm here to basically do the same thing. I started to email you guys, but I said, no, I need to show up first. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much for what you've done as far as addressing the issues that dealt with the retired employees. Been around the roses, like we would say about that, for about two years. I understand that the greenway and this team, you all have come full circle and have done something to at least remedy some of the hurt that was caused by that action. Sort of will advise, but as a retiree and as an advocate for our employees all along, I think it's very, very corporate to say thank you all for what you've done for them. And I too would like to thank Councilmembers Rodman, Flueeling, my good friend Somerville, in particular for serving as a public servant for such a long time. Stu will talk a little bit later about something I have for you to do, but certainly we thank you all so much. Being a public servant is not easy, and we certainly know that it is not something that is always rewarding, as said, Councilman Somerville, but certainly serving the public is an honor. So we thank you all so much for serving us so well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any others?
I just had one question, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Glover mentioned earlier that Mr. Barnwell was a month of February on the calendar. I think that's correct. My question is, Mr. Barnwell, were you wearing a thong?
I was hoping you weren't going to say that. Who cares? Say what he wants. Get that out of my mind. What happened to that, Paul? Go ahead. Paul's been holding that in for like 20 years.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. James Williams, Beaufort, Jasper, EOC. I too want to come over today and just say thank you to the council, our wonderful partnership with the county, but also I wanted to see, obviously, some of the wonderful council members that's going off for the final time this year. You know, we are an entity within the community that helps support the low-income households throughout Beaufort County. Also kind of give kind of a little report card, we were able to impact more than 1,200 families this year. We put 11 children, 11 teenagers to our youth leadership development program, and 487 children in our early education program are all preparing them to get into kindergarten, which this year, 75 of them entered kindergarten on task to read and understand at the level for the kindergarten readiness assessment. So we are glad to accomplish that, but to see these four fine members move on, I know there'll be more time to celebrate birthdays, more time to, you know, seek gratitude, and more time to do whatever it is you do, Mr. Rodman, and more time to spend time with your wife and family. So enjoy, and thank you, council, for the wonderful partnership we have. It's been a good year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this concludes the council meeting. Stick around. There is still some camaraderie that we'd like to do after the adjournment. And seeing no further action, we are adjourned.